Good evening. I'm Linda Langston of the League of Women Voters of Lynn County. The League is a not-for-profit volunteer political organization which neither supports nor opposes any candidate or political party. The League encourages citizen participation in government and is open to anyone 16 years and older. This forum is a part of our voter education efforts to help voters make informed decisions at the upcoming elections. I do know that I heard a couple people ask, "Why is it so early?" And that is because absentee ballots will start going out in a week. So we want people who might take advantage of absentee ballots to also take the opportunity to get to know the people who are running for office. We hope that over the course of this program you will learn more about the candidates and what they hope to do for our city. So, welcome to this Candidates Forum for Ward Three. And we have Will Brant and Michael Tope. Both are running for that District Three, Ward Three, Council C. I will start by explaining some of the procedures for the forum which each candidate received ahead of time. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement, and two minutes to answer each question. Opening and closing statements will be done in the following order. I'm going to start with the opening with Will, and then go to Michael, and we'll reverse that for the closing. The timekeeper is sitting up in the front row. They're waving their little timekeepings. And when there is a half a minute left for your speaking time, the timekeeper will hold up a card that says 30 seconds to finish your answer. At 15 seconds, the timekeeper will hold up a card that says 15 seconds. So please be mindful and wrap up when you see the stop sign. If you continue to speak after the stop sign is held up, I will say thank you. It's time to move on to the next speaker. Candidates will confine their statements and responses to relevant issues and refrain from any personal attacks. This forum is being recorded by Robin Cash, who's in the back of the room, from the Neighborhood Network News, and will be available to watch at the League of Women Voters website, lvw lynccounty.org, and at www.neighborhoodwatchnews.com websites. So, a quick reminder, please turn off your cell phones if you've not already taken care of that. If at any time during the forum you cannot hear the moderator or the candidates, please let us know. We request that you, the visitors in the audience here, treat all the candidates fairly. Please remain quiet throughout the forum. No clapping, cheering, calling out, with the exception that after closing statements, you may clap for all the candidates if you wish. You are encouraged to submit questions for the candidates on the provided papers. There were some outside, and Janet at the back has more of the yellow sheets should you have other questions to ask. Questions must be addressed to all candidates and must apply to the issues or qualifications for their particular office. Raise your hand if you'd like another piece of paper or to have your question collected. A League panel will review the questions for legibility, clarity, and applicability to all the candidates or sorters who are sitting up front here. I will read as many questions as the time allows, sometimes combining similar questions, striving to cover a variety of topics. So, we will start with the candidates now. And Will, I'll ask you to go first with your opening statement.
Okay. First, I want to apologize. My voice might be a little raspy, might cough a little bit. I'm on the tail end with a cold, so I apologize upfront. My name is Will Brant. I'm the current Ward Three Representative on the Marion City Council. Was elected back in 2015, so first term, end of the first term. Born and raised in Marion, went to Lynnmar High School, graduated in 1993. I have two older daughters that have graduated from Marion High School, and one daughter that is currently in the Marion Independent School District. I've really enjoyed being on the City Council for the last four years. I find it very rewarding to work for the citizens of Marion, and I hope that you will vote for me again, and I can do another four years to represent the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Michael, you're up.
My name is Michael Tope. I graduated from Marion Independent School District in 1977. I then went to prison for 32 years as a correctional officer. My job encompassed taking care of 600 people inside of a cellhouse, being fiscally responsible to the state of Iowa and its citizens. I turned around and also worked in the maximum security units and the disciplinary detention units. I then also transported inmates to and from the Iowa City area to the hospitals by myself as well as with other staff members. I am a very responsible individual who wants to see the needs of the city met but yet be fiscally responsible in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you both for your opening statements, and it's great to not have to pull the time cards. So, the first questions this evening are really around the library. So, I think the general perspective is looking for your thoughts on the library service, whether or not it is an asset, and finally, if you support taking this to the citizens for a vote. Michael, you want to start?
I support a strong library in the city of Marion. I just wish that they would also expand into the Lynnmar area so that they too can enjoy a library over here. There's no reason for expanding in South Marion. I say bring it to Lynnmar, let them enjoy it also. Some of the kids in Lynnmar can't get a car to the existing library. So, with that said, take the money, bring it to Lynnmar, build a satellite, and be done with this. We have a great library in South Marion. I think we should have a good one, just as great as the one in Lynnmar. Thank you.
I'm in full support of the Marion Library. I think over the past, let's see, it was 2008 was the Magin Eight process. So, for 11 years, people have been asking for a new library or expanding the library, increasing the library. I think it's something that needs to be done, and I do agree with the library board about keeping it in the Uptown, because a lot of the demographics that show that the major use is in the lower-income area of the city, which is around that area. So, I'm in support of keeping it there. And I guess I started off with that point, but as far as putting it to a vote, I think it's been put to a vote, and I think that's been, over the last 11 years, people have voiced their opinion that they want a new library. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Now, there's some questions about the future of Marion. So, could each of you speak a little bit about what you see in the future of Marion and what might be improved over the next 10 years? Will, you want to start?
I see the city continuing to grow to the north with more residential. Hopefully, we can get some more commercial to the north also. We have a nice area along Tower Terrace for that. They say that that's going to be the new Uptown along, or the center, I shouldn't say Uptown, the center of the city will be along Tower Terrace, so someday that could happen. Continuing to work on the infrastructure of the city is very important. We continue to grow and continue to grow, and we just need to keep up with that growth. So, over the next 10 years, it's really important to keep ahead of that growth and have planned growth so that we can kind of dictate where that's going to go in the city. A lot of that has to do with sewer capacity and water issues, getting sewer to certain areas and getting water to certain areas. So, we just need to continue on that planned growth pattern for the next 10 years.
Great. Michael?
I strongly believe that our city is headed in the right direction, but I don't believe that we're taking the necessary steps to ensure that we can get rapid growth as quickly as what they're saying. Highway 100 is the actual center of business in Lynn County, in Cedar Rapids. And to sit there and to push business out to the north end in the middle of a soybean field doesn't make sense to me. We just opened Farm Fleet on the west end of Cedar Rapids. That place was packed this past weekend. Why not in Marion over on Highway 13 and Highway 100? We have an excellent area that we could expand to along that corridor, but it's being ignored for the north side, and I don't understand why. Thank you.
I also want to ask a little bit about the future of Uptown Marion and how much time you spend patronizing the area of Uptown Marion. Will?
I think there's a bright future for Uptown Marion. It's heading in the correct direction. Excuse me. In the next few years, we're going to see a lot of redevelopment uptown with the streetscape and infrastructure that needs to be updated. It's still the core of our city, and I continue to think that it should be the core of our city, and we need to support it. And as far as being in the Uptown, I go uptown quite often and frequent the restaurants and the drinking establishments uptown and shopping. I mean, it's a great place to hang out, and yeah, I do like the Uptown.
Great. Michael?
I think that we're missing the point in the Uptown District. We're turning it into something that people can't go to in regular Marion. There's no men's clothing shops up there. There's no shoe shops. There's nothing that a 60-year-old man can go up there and partake in. There's no hobby shops. In my case, weapons background, there's no weapons up there in regards to buying or selling or purchasing. There's just nothing up there. When it comes to food, yeah, it's up there. I just don't go up there because I'm not comfortable going up there because I don't want to be confronted with individuals who've been partaking in alcohol. I am not a drinker. Those days are long gone. So, for those that wish to go up there, I endorse them. For the businesses that want to go up there, congratulations. I hope everything works out for you. But at this stance, with the City Council turning around and wanting to push everything to the north side, that's direct competition with the Uptown area. And I don't understand why you would want to further that competition. Marion needs to stay quaint, needs to stay available for the citizens of Marion to utilize. And I just don't see going to the north is going to help the Uptown District in any way, shape, or form. It's going to hurt them. Thank you.
Great. Michael, I'll ask you to answer this one first this time, and this is in regard to the city's property taxes. And if you could share your thoughts and understanding of Marion's tax levy rate, why you might believe it is either too high or too low, how it compares to the communities around us?
I talked to the Auditor's Office about eight months ago. At that time, I learned that Marion was number one in taxes, bonds, and fees. We're one-fourth the size of Cedar Rapids. One-fourth. That means businesses that are looking for a place to settle can do it cheaper in CR. They can do it cheaper in Robbins. They can do it cheaper in Hiawatha. We lose businesses every year to those entities because of our taxes. We turn around and have these fees passed upon our citizens who are in fixed incomes, low incomes, and it hurts them. And when it hurts them, they can't utilize the Uptown area. It's as simple as that. No spending money at the end of the day means I sit at home and eat TV dinners. What else can you do? Lower those rates, get rid of some of the rates, and you'll thrive again. But as it is, all you're doing is pushing people away from Marion and not into Marion. Thank you.
Will?
As far as the city's share of the tax levy, the city's at 14.22, which is where we stayed at for the last two years now, and that's per $1,000 of assessed value, which is lower than Cedar Rapids, which is lower than Hiawatha, which is lower than Springville in the metro area. I think there's a misconception about the taxes, because with the schools, they have a tax, the county has a tax, Kirkwood has a tax, so all that added up is your total tax bill. So, the portion of the tax bill that's the city is $14.22, sorry, which I think is right in line for where we need to be. If I remember correctly, over the last five or six years, it's fluctuated within $1 of what it's been at over the last five or six years. So, we're not raising the taxes at a crazy amount, or we're not dropping them at a crazy amount. We're kind of right in the heart of where we need to be.
Great.
Was there a second part to that question?
No, just, you're good.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael?
I thought I already answered that.
Yes, you did. My apologies. So, Michael, if you would take up what you believe is the largest issue that Ward Three specifically is dealing with, and what your plan might be to address that issue?
Currently, we have a lot of individuals that are low income in our area. We have manufactured housing, three mobile home parks. One of them is very well-maintained, one of them is average-maintained, and one is sliding. It needs to be addressed. The second issue in our area is the fact our streets are falling apart. We are not getting any streets taken care of. Third Avenue, they turned it around and they ripped it completely out between 31st Street and 35th Street. It needed it badly. There's still other streets in our area that need to be addressed. No curbing, no nothing, busted-up sidewalks, busted-up concrete works. We need to take care of that. Our children utilize that stuff, and we need to look at it severely. Thank you.
Will?
I would definitely say streets are our number-one concern in the Ward Three also. And there's been some work, like you said, on Third. There was some work on 31st last year. I know there's some streets that are scheduled to be worked on in the next year of the HMA program. Yeah, I would definitely say streets are our biggest concern in Ward Three.
Great. Next question is regarding the Marion Airport, and there are questions here about your position regarding the expansion and rezoning of the Marion City Airport runways. Will, you want to start?
Sure. Expansion of the runway, I'm definitely in favor for. I think it will help with the business coming to town. The area around there is the industrial area around there. Hopefully, we can attract more larger businesses to the area, and having a runway where that, you know, they could fly in is, I think, key to that, too. As far as the long-term plan for it, the layout plan for the airport, which we passed a couple of years ago, also included a second runway, which I think still should stay in that long-term plan, because 20, 30, 40 years down the road from now, we could have an industrial boom on the edge of Marion. So, we might need that extra space for that runway. But what we're doing right now with the expansion of it, the width of it and the length of it, I think is sufficient for what we need today and in the next few years.
I sat on the Marion Airport Advisory Committee. I listened to all points of view, and one of the points of view was an asphalt runway. I argued against it. Every three years, that asphalt has to be treated. Every three years, until the 10th year, then has to be ground up. It's not cost-effective. It's not cost-efficient, and it does not save the taxpayers a dime of money. It costs them. I said concrete. Our original idea was concrete, and we voted it in as concrete. Now, they've changed it, and they went back to asphalt. I don't understand that concept. I don't understand why we're industrializing an airport close to a runway when the airport is saying during their ALP that we must create a safety barrier to make sure no one is harmed. But yet, an east-west runway will put aircraft right over a city park. I'm not in favor of that. It doesn't make sense. And the asphalt, you're going to lengthen the runway to 4,000 feet or 3,770 when I was on the board, puts it closer to a county trail. So, who's going to be responsible when a plane comes down through there, because it's bigger and it stops long in the trail? See? Again, it's about safety and concern. I brought up the fact on the committee, why we don't have a fence around that to ensure safety. Again, it was lost in the debate. There's a lot of stuff that can happen out at the airport, good for the city of Marion, but there needs to be an addressing of what can happen bad for the city. Thank you.
Great. There are several questions here this evening revolving around the candidates' volunteer service, their leadership in the community. So, perhaps you could both share with the audience this evening a little bit about the things you've done over your history to be involved in the community of Marion, volunteer and otherwise. Will, we'll start with you.
Let's see, there's a long list. I've been on multiple, I am on multiple committees for the Chamber, Special Events Committee, I've got to think now. For the Uptown, I'm on the Uptown Board, Strategic Marketing Committee that's going on right now for the Uptown, Swamp Box Steering Committee for the last 10, well, not quite 10 years, close to 10 years, which is this weekend, by the way. Let's see, what else am I on? Well, with the city, I'm on the B-PAC Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, the Sidewalk Assessment I volunteered a lot of stuff for the Chamber and the Uptown, lots of the events. You'll usually find me working a booth or whatnot. There's probably more, and I'm not thinking of them. I'm on a couple committees with, I'm a Realtor, and my job is a Realtor, and I'm on a couple committees for the Board of Realtors also, governmental affairs and, I can't think of the other one right now. Sorry.
Great. That's okay. Michael?
As I said, I volunteered for the Marion Airport Advisory Committee and got picked to do that. As for anything else in the city, no, I have not done anything else in the city for anyone. But, at the end of the debate, I will make a statement, and I will inform you of what else I'm willing to do. Thank you.
Questions here about, do you believe that growth is a good thing for Marion? Michael, you want to start with that one?
If it's a moderate growth, absolutely. But just sitting there and growing just because it brings in new tax revenue and everything else, and bringing in further problems for the citizens of the community in the older areas of town, then yeah, I'm kind of wanting to slow that down a little bit. I want to ensure that people understand Marion's way of life and what we cherish here in our community. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm definitely for growth in Marion, especially with industrial and commercial businesses coming into town to help offset the burden of the taxes on the residential. I think we're in the 70s, as far as, I think it was 78% of our taxes come from residential, so we need to get that continuing to drop, which it has over the last few years. But as far as residential development and growth when it comes to people moving to Marion, I'm definitely for that also. And I think, like I said earlier, planned development is really important when it comes to that. It's not just, you want to build a house over here, great, go ahead and do it. We need to make sure, which we've been doing, make sure that, you know, it does fit in with the city, with the growth that the city's on, the trajectory that we're on, the area we're looking to grow. Again, it has to do with sewer water. I mean, there's an area of the city right now where there is no more growth available because there is no sewer capacity. I mean, so there is, there are those issues that we have to deal with with the growth, and I think it's definitely a good thing, but we just have to manage it and stay ahead of it, which I think we are doing now and doing a good job of.
Great. The next question is to share your thoughts about the roundabout on 10th Street, whether or not you think it will affect east-west traffic, and whether or not it will affect housing and any potential demolition in the area. Michael?
I'm concerned more about the Granger House and what impact it'll have on that property. I really don't think that we need to be utilizing roundabouts in neighborhoods, in urban environments, where there's already traffic flows established. On the outskirts of town, absolutely. Move that traffic. Tower Terrace should be loaded full of them, but we don't see that. We see it in the smaller neighborhoods, which causes congestion, and backups, and anger, and hostility, and people want to get rid of them. I don't think that's the answer for the ones we have. But I do believe that what we need to look at is whether or not it impacts the area in which it's placed, and whether or not it's a financial impact also. If it's too costly, don't put it in. If it's a reasonable cost, absolutely. Thank you.
Will?
As far as 10th and 10th, the survey that, or the engineering survey that was done on it did recommend putting in a mini roundabout there. I think that probably is the route that we should be going for over the other options in that location. From what we've seen, there's no impact on the homes around there. In fact, the council directed the design of it to not impact the homes around there and make it as large as it can without affecting the homes. So, I think the right-of-way acquisition was very, very minimal. I don't, it did not affect the Granger House at all.
So, next question, there are a couple of these related to parks and trails. Parks are a major attraction in Marion, and so also trails. Do you support continued investment in our parks and share your thoughts on the Seymour Trail? Will, start on this one.
Most definitely. Continue to expand our park system. Get a lot of use, our trail system gets a lot of use. That's one of the main things that people ask for in citizen surveys, trails. That's with Magin Next, that was just done by the Chamber. It was one of the top vote-getters of what people wanted to see was expanding trails. And the city right now is working on the Seymour Trail and the Indian Creek Trail and the Grantwood Trail. There's lots of federal money coming into Marion for these trails. Seymour Trail, what, just my opinion on the Seymour Trail? Is that what the question was?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
Definitely for it. I mean, it's going to connect Cedar Rapids up into Marion eventually. There's going to be, the trails will go over the, well, will go under, I should say, Highway 100 out by Menards, and then continue through the field there and up, and then connect into Cedar Rapids. So, I think it's, I think it's a very important trail, actually, because that will actually bring people from, let's say, downtown Cedar Rapids. They can bike or walk all the way to the Uptown and hopefully spend some money there, too.
Great.
I absolutely support the trail system. I'm a little hesitant when it comes to removal of historic items in regards to putting in a trail. I don't believe we need to remove the railroad bridge over Indian Creek. That was built in 1913, and I think that's historical. I also believe that the railroad bridge over 7th Avenue should not be touched. Now, I understand there's some traffic flow problems underneath that bridge when they connect 1st Avenue to, 1st Street to Albernett Road, and I understand that. But we need to start preserving some of our history before it's all gone under a wrecking ball because someone decided that this is the thing to do. I'm for trails. I just want to be reasonable enough to keep what we have in place, if we can, to use it as a showcase to our city. Thank you.
Next questions are generally around the subject of how do you manage your leadership position and build consensus about issues? Because clearly, you work as a group on City Council, so there has to be a way to find your way through. So, knowing that leadership is important, could you tell us a little bit about your style or times when you've worked with a group together to change their opinion, and how you might provide that as a role model for the youth in Marion? Will?
That was a long question.
Great.
Yeah, it's very important to work together, I think, on the City Council with the other council members. We're not always going to see eye to eye on things. It happens all the time. all the time. There's multiple things that I, um, don't agree with, but unfortunately the, I shouldn't say unfortunately, but the rest of the, the council may, and so something might pass that I'm not in favor of, which, you know, that happens. I'm trying to think of a specific example of that, but, um, well, when we had, the RV ordinance came back up in front of us, I was pretty adamant about not, that not getting passed the way it was written. Um, I think I voiced my opinion to the other council members and hopefully helped, um, inform them of what I thought to help not let that RV ordinance get in, get put into place. So, um, I think that was all the questions.
That's good. Michael?
I have not dealt with city ordinances or anything else other than go up to City Hall and argue against them. In response to the RV ordinance, there was only twelve complaints that year, is what, on average. That's one a month and I didn't think it was necessary. So I was rather vocal against that. In the prison system, you had books you had to go by. If you didn't know the answer, you went to the books. If you didn't know the answer from the books, you went to the supervisor. And the last answer to that would be always, no, if you didn't get the answer or the information or the research to move forward. I'm a person that ends up having to rely on a great many individuals in the community and via law to lead my life by. So that's the way I would do it. Thank you.
Great. Um, the next question is, share with the audience tonight, what's the best thing about Marion? What do you love about Marion? Will?
The people. I, it's such a great, great community to live in. There's amazing people that live in our city. Um, I moved away for work in two thousand, nineteen ninety-nine or so and, uh, you know, lived in Wisconsin, lived in Colorado, and it's not the same. The people are just not the same. Uh, we moved home to raise the kids here. I'm very, very happy that we did that and, I, yeah, I would say that's the number one thing that I love about Marion is all of you.
I grew up here as a small child. I remember walking across Hannah Park, which was a field, and going to the swimming pool by myself, eight years old. I remember making the same trek in the fall and winter for the hill, the sledding, the ice skating rinks. I enjoy my neighbors, I enjoy the people around me. We sit out on the front steps. It's a small-town field, which I thoroughly enjoy. And I'd like to continue that progress and that idea. I know all my neighbors in the court, I help them out every chance I get, and I help my neighbors out in the surrounding areas. If they need help, all they have to do is pick up a phone. This is what makes Marion great, not afraid to drop what you're doing and go help somebody out. Thank you.
Great. Um, the next question is about the Seventh Avenue Mall and concerns about the city perhaps not having much to say about the mall. What do you know, what do you want to share with us about the mall and the businesses therein? Will?
Um, I guess I'm not quite sure what you mean by...
Um, so, the question was about the Seventh Avenue Mall.
Right.
Um, what, what do you know about what's going on at the mall? I think there's concern here that there are only three or four businesses in the mall.
Sure.
Sort of what would be the, your perspective on that?
Sure, and I know that the current owner is working on updating the mall and working on getting more businesses back into the mall. I mean, a couple of them moved out. Anytime Fitness built, or bought a building and expanded. You know, Tommasus is, is building a building across the street. Um, a couple just went out of business, um, which is unfortunate, but, uh, hopefully the mall can be revitalized now that, uh, the owner is gonna be putting some money into it and, uh, making it more attractive for businesses to be uptown.
Great, thank you. Michael?
I absolutely support the Uptown Mall as a citizen. When I sit back and look at what it once was and what it was capable of bringing to the city, unfortunately, that day has passed. I hope that the new owner revitalizes it. I hope that the new owner fills it full of businesses in which I can go to. That's my general wish for Marion. I don't wish anybody to lose their business. I know, it, it's catastrophic. I don't want to see businesses leave. I want to see them staying. And part of keeping them here is lowering their burdens. I would love to see a TIF grant offered to Mr. Witter, who owns that mall, so that he can be helped in getting it up to standard and up to snuff and up to the citizens' ideas of a mall. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, the next question is in regards to City Hall and staff. Could you share some of the things that you find positive about City Hall, the government, and its staff and how you might be able to work with them going forward? Michael, you want to take that one first, please?
Yes. I've dealt with different people up in City Hall on different issues throughout the city. I found them very friendly, very forthcoming and very helpful in answering all my questions. I've never had an issue with anyone at City Hall in any way, shape or form. I've talked to council members who also were very forthcoming and given me answers, and I greatly appreciate that. It helps me understand a lot more what's going on in Marion behind the scenes. Thank you.
I think we have a great staff in City Hall. Um, professional staff, a very well-educated staff, very smart staff, uh, who all work together collectively to help, um, move Marion forward. And I think that's what we need and I, we have it in place. I mean, I don't really have any complaints about any of the staff at City Hall. Um, they're all fantastic. When you need something, call them up, they, they get it to you, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Um, the next question is about my favorite subject and that would be the landfill. So, the Lynn County Cedar Rapids Solid Waste Agency is potentially looking into expanding the life of the landfill by about twenty years, um, which is beyond, uh, what apparently is originally settled upon. So could you talk a little bit about your perspective on the extension of the life of the Marion landfill? Will, go ahead and start on that.
Yeah, the city's growing to the north and that's where we have open land to the north and that's why a lot of the growth is to the north. And unfortunately, the landfill is also to the north. Um, at this point, I don't think I'm in favor of expanding, letting the landfill expand at all because we need to, in my mind, the landfill needs to run its course like it was planned to do when the agreement was put in place with the city. And, uh, that way, when we get, when the city does get up to the landfill, it's not a landfill anymore and it's hopefully a recreational area or something and, and, uh, development can happen around it. So at, at this point, I'm not in favor of the expansion of the landpoint, or the landpoint, the landfill.
Thank you. Michael?
I am in favor of extending it. I don't want a bigger landfill, but it's inevitable. We all make garbage. And with real estate costs going through the roof in Lynn County, it's gonna be harder and harder to find someone who will donate a farm to bury a bottle, to take care of paper or anything else. We need to utilize that facility as long as possible. And if it means an extension, let's keep doing it. And while we're extending it, let's look for someplace that's more viable in Lynn County to dispose of this. But that's a problem that just is not gonna go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this should be a pretty quick yes or no. Um, if elected, will you be willing, without delay, to sign the city's ethics policy? Will?
Uh, yeah, I already have.
Great. Michael?
No. And the reason for that is I'm elected by my constituents to do a job. I don't feel that I need to sign an ethics policy in any way, shape or form due to the fact that I would then become the, uh, Mr. Pluckons, our city manager's boss. The problem in Marion is the fact that the city council and the mayor are the boss of the city manager. It's not the other way around. Why would I sign a document which limits me from voicing my opinion or being vocal against something that I don't agree with when I was put in there by other citizens who share my same opinions and thoughts? Thank you.
Great. Um, next, could you discuss a little bit about your history of supporting the business community in Marion? Michael, you want to go ahead first on that, please?
Yes. I support a lot of businesses in Marion even though I say I don't. I support Culvers, I support McDonald's, I support Subway, I support, uh, a shop on Thirty-Fifth Street that does lawn care work for, uh, equipment. I support a great many businesses here. The sad part is, I would like to support more. I just was at Farm and Fleet the other day looking for these shoes after I exhausted looking all over Lynn County for them. Can't find them. Farm and Fleet says if they don't got it, you don't need it. Got those in Louisiana. Why can't we have stuff here that people need? I don't mind the frou-frou stuff that people like. I'm all for that. But let's start getting something in this town that older Americans, older citizens would like to enjoy. I just don't see it. I see this town catering to the youth, which is fine, but the rest of us, we're pretty much ignored except for our tax dollars. Thank you.
Will?
I try to shop local as much as possible. Uh, everything is not available in Marion, so yeah, we'll shop outside of Marion. But if, uh, if it's going for food, if it's going shop for gifts, I mean, whatnot, I try to buy as much as I can in Marion. Uh, even Walmart, I mean, most of those employees are Marion residents, so I mean, it's job security for them, so, and obviously that's where you get a lot, a lot of the little things, but yeah, it's, uh, it's, I try to shop as much as possible and local.
Great. This next question is really about inclusion and being a welcoming community. So, in a time when people are talking a little more about diversity, equity and inclusion, are there things you might do to help Marion become more welcoming to African-Americans and other minorities? Will, you want to start with that?
Um, I guess just continue to have open arms for everyone. I mean, I think Marion community itself, the residents of Marion are very open to, uh, um, everyone to come and live in Marion and enjoy Marion. I, no matter race, sex, I mean, whatever, I mean, I think everyone's welcome in Marion. Um, and I, personally, I haven't seen, or I haven't, I don't hear as far as people being excluded from things in Marion. So, um, I think we just continue what we're doing and, and being supportive to, to everyone.
Michael?
I believe in Ward Three, it's a very diverse population. We have low-income, high-income. We have all races of people. I welcome that. It's what makes us a stronger community. I would like to see more of those individuals, of other races and of females working for the city. I don't see enough of that. I'd like to see City Hall open that up and get those people employed with our community. It makes us stronger, it makes us better. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, next question is regarding constituent engagement. Could you talk a little bit about how you will engage with your Ward Three constituents? Will?
Um, well, every Saturday morning, someone from council, which usually once a month, I'm there, is up at the library to, uh, discuss anything with, with any citizen that wants to discuss anything from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. Um, so that's a, a good way to engage the community. Also, uh, there's some, um, meetings coming up that are Ward meetings for rezoning of the city, which I'll attend, plan to attend all of them, not just the Ward Three meeting. Um, we've tried in the past to do Ward meetings every quarter. Um, unfortunately, they were not well-attended, so they only lasted for a couple of years. But I would, I would love to be able to do those and have those. Unfortunately, they haven't been, um, well-attended, so if more people would come to those, I'd be more open to continuing to do that.
Great. Michael?
I absolutely agree with that philosophy. I also, when we had MJ's Uptown, we held several meetings where we invited citizens throughout the city of Marion to come and talk to us, list their gripes, their grievances, and try to air it and try to give them the answers they needed. Unfortunately, after a while, those meetings dried up. I think they need to be continued. I have no problem talking to constituents. I stop on the street when I walk my dog and I, I talk to people. And a lot of them will open up to me what their thought processes are, whether they love this city, whether they're upset with this city, whether things are going on in this city. And I tell them, I said, just be patient, maybe the right ears hasn't heard it yet. Be patient. Thank you.
Great. Um, and we have a question here about social media. So, we live in a day and age when many people have a presence on social media and it, um, it sometimes can change once you're in public office. Uh, sometimes it doesn't, but sometimes it does. So could you talk a little bit about how, a little bit about your own social media presence and how that, um, how being in office either has or would affect that? Michael?
I don't think it'll affect it at all. I've always utilized on the Marion Iowa activist page, exact wording from City Hall. When I do that, individuals get on there and the first thing they say, you're being negative, you're, you're bringing out the worst of the city. And I said, if you've got a complaint with me, it's not me. It's what City Hall said. I am not anything more than the messenger. Go to City Hall meetings, talk to these people. This council, the council members of City Hall has all the information. They have webpages, you can contact them, they have phone numbers. I would much rather have them talk to those people that way and get the correct information than a bunch of incorrect information. And I try to provide all that information on that activist page. I haven't got anything against the city of Marion. I want to see Marion be promoted. I want to see it strive forward. But for some odd reason, there's a group of individuals in this community that decide we want stuff as opposed to what we need. And this city needs a lot more needs than what it wants. Thank you.
Will?
I'll be honest, I don't use a lot of social media outside of work. Um, I learned, I do a lot, I post stuff for my kids and stuff, about my kids and stuff, but, um, I learned when I was running for council in twenty fifteen that trying to engage folks on social media just turns into people complaining. I mean, just, it just turns into a lot of negative, uh, comments, name-calling, things like that. So I started at the time just to tell people, please contact me so we can talk about it. Um, unfortunately, things like that didn't happen. So, I don't do a lot with social media when it comes to the city, just because there's a, a lot of negative stuff that people throw on Facebook because they, you know, they're behind a computer and not, uh, face-to-face, but, so, yeah, I don't, don't use it a lot.
Great. The next question is really about, what do you hope to do, sort of think about it as the, what are the reasons you're running, um, for office? What are the things that you may want to get done if you find yourself elected to this position? Michael?
I've talked to a lot of people in Ward Three. They're not happy with city government. That's a fact. They're mad, they're angry, they want their streets fixed, they want certain things done, and I will try to help them get those things done. But I'm only one voice. At the end of the day, there are seven, seven total council members with the, with the mayor and I'm one voice. But at least I can be loud enough to be heard in City Hall. For instance, one person I talked to showed me a backyard that had growth all the way up to the power lines. And she said to me, that's the city's property. And I said, what? Have you contacted the city? And she said, yes. And they told me they'd come in and clean it once and once only. And I said, why isn't the homeowner doing it? Because that's the city's property and that's a rental house and they don't mow their rental house either. We need to start tightening We need to start tightening up in Marion and get us looking better than what we are. Thank you.
Well?
I've also talked to a lot of people in Ward Three and most of the people I've talked to are very happy with the way the city is run and the direction of the city is going. Um, I'm gonna continue to, to promote the growth of Marion. Um, I, I keep telling this to people too, I don't have an agenda. I don't have a specific thing that I get up, that I want to get elected for. It's not for, you know, a personal agenda. I, I'm, want to be on city council to represent the city and the citizens of Marion to help continue the path, continue on the path that we are on when it comes to growth in a positive, in a positive direction. Um, so I mean, infrastructure's a large one, zero waste community is a, a big issue. Just for preservation, I mean, the, the list goes on and on of what, what I'm in favor of. Um, but again, there's not just one specific agenda piece that, that I'm running for.
Great. Um, so, uh, we're going to move to closing statements now. And as I noted, Michael, we'll start with you for the closing statements. You'll have two minutes.
As I've said, I've been a resident here for a long time. I'm not happy, thoroughly happy, with the growth and the way we're going. We need to make sure we keep our money with our citizens and let them decide where it needs to go. Not into a city with, that's making up all these fees just to generate income. The city's not gonna repair your natural gas line or relight your pilot light, but they charge you for it. The city's not gonna fix your electricity when a tree goes down over the bran, over the line. They're not gonna fix it. The cities will turn around and charge you for when it rains. I still can't believe that. Or a bug we can't control. We need to get rid of these fees. It's hurting our city, not helping us. If you elect me as Ward Three council, there is a stipend that the city hall will give me every month. I don't want it. I believe public service is just that, public service. I will donate all that money after taxes to the Boys and Girls Club, to Little League on Grand Avenue, and Peg Pierce over on 3rd Avenue. I believe that we need to be, start helping these children get into sports, that way they can get through school without having to go to prison where I or my relatives and friends have to deal with them. It's a lot cheaper to give away that city money yearly than to spend fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars per person, per year to keep them incarcerated. Thank you.
Will, two minutes for you.
Sure. Um, I am asking for your vote on November 5th for Ward Three representative. Um, I, if, I think that if, if you're happy with the way the direction the city is going, I think that a vote for me would be, um, in favor of that. I believe we're on the right path. I believe that the city is growing at a rate that we can control right now and I think we need to continue to control that. Um, there's a lot of great opportunity in our city and there's a lot of great growth that's going on in our city. And I would like to continue to serve you on city council and, and oversee that growth that we're, we're seeing these days. Thank you.
Great. Um, thank you both for your participation this evening. Um, I would like to thank both of you for your participation in our democratic process. I'd also like to thank Lynn Mar School for the use of the Little Theater Auditorium this evening. Um, and to the voters, please remember to vote. This is a, a new time, so on November 5th, you'll have the opportunity to vote for both school board and for city council races. So this is a new thing. Uh, certainly, I think we can all hope that there'll be much broader participation in school board votes by having them together with the city council votes. So thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you very much. Let's give a round of applause to the candidates. We'll take a short five-minute break and then we will start the forum for the candidates from-